Good evening, everyone. It is now 7:04 on Monday, October 3, 2022 for our village board meeting. Please all stand for the pledge allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will everyone please remain standing for a moment. Silence for all the victims of Hurricane Ian. Thank you, please. Your seat. I can do a roll call, please. Trustee Alpert?
Present.
Trustee Corrigan?
Present.
Trustee Saverman?
Present.
Trustee Hagan?
Present.
And Mayor Curly is present. Upcoming meeting. A regular meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 7, 2022 at 7:00 p.m. That is the night before election night, so we may consider changing it, but we'll give public plenty early notice. We have a need a motion for approval amendments for September 12, 2022 board meeting, please. Can I get a motion?
Motion, trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second it, trustee Saverman.
Second by trustee Saverman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Fred Rela, please. Grant program, please.
Good evening, board. Melissa?
Good evening, Fred.
Good evening, Fred.
I have two things I'd like to talk about tonight. First is parking lot B. There was a preconstruction meeting for that. Preconstruction meeting was necessary because we have two grants for that project. It's about a $390,000 project, and we got $170,000 in grants. So the mayor was involved in that meeting. We had the DPW involved. We had Bob from the Parking Authority there, and we also had Maria Frank from the county who runs the CBBG program. And it was a very good meeting. We also had Tilcon, the contractor there, and it was determined that on or about October 14th, they're going to begin the project. So we'll have that lot paved and striped, and it should take about three days, right, Charles?
Around three days for that project.
I think we actually moved to the 17th now. I think that's the date they're coming, gonna come, the 17th.
Okay.
We're gonna try to get them to do, as you saw me that day with them, expressing my heartfelt opinion that we can go right into the striping after that, so we'll stay on them with that.
Okay. Very good. That's good news. So the second item I want to talk about is we've been nominated for a grant in the amount of $235,000 for a new boiler system for village hall. When I walked in this room today, it was about 100 degrees, so it's very hard to control the temperature when the boiler is working. It's been patchworked every year for the past dozen years. Charles has done a good job with the contractors in keeping it running the best we possibly can, but it's something that's in dire need of replacement. So this grant, that used to be called the State and Municipal Facilities Grant, they did away with those grants. It's now called the CREST Grant, and that's an acronym for Community Resiliency, Economic Sustainability, and Technology. So it's still being run by DASNE, okay? So there is, we've been nominated for it, but we gotta submit paperwork to DASNE. This is sort of like a formality. They gotta then approve it, then it goes to the State Budget Committee, then they approve it, then they can send us what's called a grant dispersment agreement, which the mayor or Michael Janito can execute, and then we can actually begin the project. We cannot put shovel in the ground or begin the project until that grant dispersment agreement is executed. We're thinking that with all the approvals and paperwork that needs to be done, that we're looking at spring of 2023 for the project.
Thank you, Fred.
And I want to thank the mayor for his relationship with Senator...
Elijah Reickland Melnick.
Elijah Reickland Melnick, yes, because that was instrumental in us acquiring the grant.
Right. I also mentioned a couple other things we needing, so I hope he down the road comes through with us on some other things, the corners on top of the building and some other, some other issues, huh?
Yep.
So, thank you, Fred.
Yep.
Thank you, Fred.
Kathy Mills, please, for Culture and Recreation.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, village board. A few things, hello, a few things that we have coming up. Sunday, there will be a fundraiser down at the ball fields between 12 and 4 to aid the victims of Hurricane Ian, so we're looking forward to having a great turnout for that. We have the band The Maniacs. We've got a DJ, and we've got a lot of fun activities for families, for kids, for groups to come down. So Sunday between 12 and 4 down at the ball fields. The next event that we have, well, the one before that, I should have brought this one up first, this Saturday is the window painting, Saturday, October 8, in the village. It starts, the kids start painting at 10:00 a.m., and we have the windows all lined up. We're looking forward to getting out into the village, having the, it's the 6th grade, 7th grade, 8th grade kids from the Suffolk Middle School school. So we're looking forward to it, and that's this Saturday. And then the Halloween Parade and Trunk or Treat is on Sunday, October 23rd, at 2:00 p.m. We're gonna have the parade over to the trunk or treat, so it'll be a great, fun-filled day, so we're looking forward to that.
What time is the parade?
Uh, 2:00 p.m.
2:00 p.m.
Yep.
And the, and just to back you up on this, and the, all the money we raise will go to split evenly between the Salvation Army, who's come to this community, has helped many times, and the American Red Cross. The American Red Cross is actually twice, I've had to call them out to help residents at this village, and they've been nothing but absolutely superb. So anything we could do to assist them in their time of need, I want to help, but this whole board does, huh? Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
I'd like at this point to open up the public comment period. Can I get a motion, please, open up the public comment?
Motion, trustee Alpert.
Motion made by trustee Alpert. Can I get a second, please?
Second, trustee Corrigan.
Second made by trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Good evening, mayor and board. Bruce Simon representing the Village of Suffolk Community Foundation with some breaking news. And when I say breaking, I mean breaking, because it wasn't until minutes ago that I found out. Our brothers at the DPW, the CSEA members have volunteered their time again for our next Not Just Battery Saturday event, which we'd like to hold on November 5. Like to hold it downstairs, as we've done in the past, collecting batteries, paint, household electronics, computers, cell phones, all that kind of stuff. We couldn't do it without the CSEA members. Joe Hunt is back there, and I can never thank him and his men enough for what they do for us. He's waving me off because he's modest. If it is okay with the board, I'd like to go forward and announce that.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, board. Look forward to seeing you all over there, and just traditionally, Steve, that would be November 5 from 10 a to 1 p, because you're going to ask me again later, so I figured I'll put it on the record now.
And no tires.
And no tires. Yes, we'll take medications as well, but no tires. Thank you all. Yes, Frank, is there a question? Fred, you good?
I'm good. Sounds good.
Thank you very much. Have a good day, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that, Bruce.
Thank you very much. Bruce, we'll have to look and see if that works for the whole village, but we'll get back to you on that date, okay? You just hit it with us now, so a little more warning would be nicer, but thank you. Nobody's fault, we just gotta see what, how it works with the village and everything, and all the different things that are going on. Any other, anyone else like to make a comment, please? Okay, can I have a motion, please, to close the public hearing, please? Public comment, please?
Motion from trustee...
Motion made by trustee Hagan. Second, please?
Second by trustee Saverman.
Second made by trustee Saverman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Police Department, see, please, Chief Lockman, please.
Good evening, board members. On the month of September, the police department responded to 910 calls for service. We had our first dare dance of the season last Friday. As usual, the event was very well attended, kids had a great time, so it was, you know, success, success for them. The fall dare hockey season has also begun this week. This Friday is our second week of games, so anybody's free to come, stop by if they'd like. Finally, several members of our department attended events throughout the month of September, to include the mayor's family fun day at the memorial pool, Salvation Army Family Fun Day, the street fair, and Suffolk Day, so it was a busy month for us on the community front. The only agenda item I have for the board's consideration tonight, at this time, I would like to ask the board to accept the resignation of part-time police officer John Roberts. Officer Roberts' career totaled 33 years of service, starting with the city of White Plains Police Department in 1989, before being hired by the town of Ramapo Police Department in 1991. Upon retirement from the Ramapo Police Department, Officer Roberts became a part-time officer with our department, and that was 2015, until his recent retirement. We'd like to thank Officer Roberts for his service and wish him well upon his retirement.
We all, the board, myself and the board, would like to thank him for his service.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
He's earned his retirement very well in his life, working a full career there and assisting us as, as an officer here all part-time, so I'd like to make a motion to accept Officer Roberts' retirement.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by trustee Hagan. Can I get a second, please?
Second. Second by trustee Saverman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Um, chief, I just want to thank you for the, on Suffolk Day, the great job the police department did with showing the village what assets you have, showing off Thorn the dog, off Zingu and all, everyone that was there, you know, lieutenant in the back there doing a great job, going to crowd, and I think, I think it's a plus, it shows, it's showing off what we have and what we can do, and the people, it's bringing that community policing officer idea and status to the village, and I, and I just want to, please thank everyone you can for me there. And I'd like to thank the sheriff's department, the DA, and all, the Ramapo Police Department, and FIS, and the helicopter pilot who flew me in, huh? And all these people that assisted Suffolk, and all these different departments that assisted us, right? The town of Ramapo, supervisor spec, with all the different things that they all gave us, and I just want to, you know, convey our thank you to all of them. Matter of fact, we'll be writing some letters to them and thank you, them also. Thank you, chief.
I appreciate you saying that. I'll pass on your words to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, chief, huh? Form into public works, Charles Zawiki, please.
Good evening, board. First resolution is requesting authorization for payment of application number eight to Dewberry Engineers for the GOCHER, that's the governor's office of storm recovery, backup power for a critical facilities project in the amount of $2,215.25.
All right, I'll do them individually, Charles, in this one. Can I have a motion, please, to accept the payment to Dewberry for application number eight, please, in the amount of $2,215.25, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan. Can I have a second, please?
Second, Hagan.
Second made by trustee Hagan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Next resolution, authorizing payment of application number eight to Dewberry Engineers for, again, the GOCHER, another GOCHER project, hardening of water treatment plant project in the amount of $1,823.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for the authorized payment, application number eight to Dewberry Engineers, the amount of $1,823, please?
Motion, trustee Alpert.
Motion made by trustee Alpert.
Second, trustee Saverman.
Second by trustee Saverman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Next resolution be accepting the resignation of refuse department laborer Joseph Sessa.
Can I get a motion to accept the resignation of Joseph Sessa?
I so move.
Can I motion made by trustee Saverman? Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second made by trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Next resolution, accepting, or, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, appointing Christopher Downey to the vacant refuse department laborers position.
Right, this is just to replace the Joseph Sessa position. So can I get a motion, appointing Christopher Downey to labor?
Trustee Hagan.
Motion made by trustee Hagan. Second, please?
Second by trustee Saverman.
Second made by trustee Saverman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
It's true, it's true.
Okay.
Any questions?
I just want to explain, just one second, Charles, all right? On parking lot B, again, we have meetings in 17th, that should start on that one, okay? We also have a meeting in reference to the train lot tomorrow, B, Charles, Mr. Janito and a couple others here, and Mr. Hunt there, where we're going to talk about the paving on that. They're anticipating October 29th to stop that one, so we'll go one right in, right into the other. We're gonna meet with them tomorrow on that, and hopefully that. We're also, we're gonna, after we do the parking lot B, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, Charles, we're gonna go right into Milford Lane? We're gonna attempt to start doing paving on Milford?
Yeah, that's the roadway improvements, phase 12.
Correct.
Milford.
Correct.
Cragmire, West Malpe, and Parkside.
Clermont and Parkside, right. Yeah, so they'll go in, they'll be, they'll be doing that also. And I just want to mention Woodland. We've had a pro, Woodland is a, is a messy road to drive down, drive through, and because of that, they end up going to Hillside. We put a new sign up on Hillside, so people watch their speed limit on that, but we're gonna look into Woodland next year. The reason why that's not on our, on our drawing boards yet is because we're dealing with FEMA in attempting to get them to pay for, for piping underneath the road for stormwater, storm pipe, so we're trying to see if they pay for it. So we don't want to pave something, dig it up, and pave it again. So that's where, that's where we're at. So if we get a better answer on that, we'll be able to, you know, help, help the public over there, because I know that that area has a concern, and we have the concern with them also. All right, good, Charles, right?
Mayor, I just wanted to ask also about Vista Way. What's the status of that?
Vista Way is included in that. That's what I'm talking about, Woodland Vista Way, right there. So last meeting when we bought that piece of equipment, we now can, we're gonna be picking that piece of equipment up here this week. That piece of equipment helps us to do better paving jobs, so we can fill in Vista Way. Am I correct, Charles, in that?
Yes, that's correct. It enables us to, to patch and pave small areas more effectively.
We still have two more areas to dig up right there, which we're, we're fixing, well, we're fixing ourselves from old flooding that happened. So they're, they're getting to that, and then we're gonna go ahead, and we're gonna patch that for that area.
What, what happened exactly to Vista Way? In other words, there's no road at all?
Because we, we actually had to, well, I guess the water came up from underneath the ground, right, Charles? Because the fittings, well, I guess you call them fittings, whatever you call, they, they broke, huh?
I see.
Yeah, the, it's large, 54-inch diameter, concrete, reinforced concrete pipe, and they're short lengths, they're only, you know, eight or 10 foot in length, and so, and, you know, each, each joint is mortared. That, that system was installed decades ago, and with the enormous amount of water flowing through the pipe, it, what they call exfiltration, it, it shoots out any, any crack or crevice or hole or in, in those joints.
So it was watered down.
And creates sinkholes and other problems.
So we're, we're on it. We, like I said, we bought a piece of equipment that'll help us do that, and the DPW's doing, you know, did a good job with Charles to fix those, those fittings and joints there, so we can go ahead and pave it. So pave it, fix it now, but next year, that would be a priority pave for us, huh? That's how I see it. Thank you, Charles.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Janito, thank you, sir.
Good evening, mayor and board. The first thing on our agenda here is for amendment to the budget for AIM state aid, and a quick explanation of that is AIM stands for Aid and Incentives to Municipalities. For many years, it was direct state aid that came out of the state to our local government. And then a few years ago, under Governor Cuomo and one of his budgets, he decided that the state shouldn't have to pay for this, let the counties pay this aid in the form of taking some of their sales tax, and he allowed an internet sales tax, and then said to them, now you can make these payments. So they called it AIM-related payments, and those would come from the state, but much later in the year. Governor Hochul just changed it back to being state aid again. So all this is, is really an amendment to the budget to change the classification from what was known as AIM-related payments to state aid.
Okay, can I have a motion, please, amending the 2022, 2020 budget for AIM state aid, please?
Motion, trustee Alpert.
Motion made by trustee Alpert. Can I get a second, please?
Second, trustee Saverman.
Second made by trustee Saverman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The second item on our agenda is what Fred Rela had mentioned about the boiler grant from DASNE. So essentially, at this time, we believe that the project is going to be about $600,000. We're going to firm that up with Charles Zawiki as to the cost estimate of the project. The grant is for $235,000, and we would essentially issue debt or authorize the issuance of debt for the remainder of that project. Now normally, what we would be doing, if we get approved for the grant, then what we would do is have a bond resolution for $600,000, and that would allow us the cash flow, because this is a reimbursement grant, sometimes the reimbursement comes within months, and other cases, we've had, what, about 18 months or two years sometimes before the money comes out from DASNE. So in any event, this resolution is simply allowing me to sign off on the documents to submit for the grant and so forth.
Right. Can I get a motion, authorizing the village treasurer to sign the DASNE CREST grant agreement for the village hall boiler?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan. Second, please?
Second, trustee Saverman.
Second made by trustee Saverman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, huh? Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustees, have any comments, anything to bring up, anything you want, questions to say?
No, at this time.
Okay, I guess, I guess I'll go now. Do my items first. Can I have a resolution accepting the resignation of Joseph Tishner? Joe Tishner has worked here for, for approximately 10 years as assistant building inspector. He's gonna be moving on in life, so we're currently actively working to replace that position, and, okay, can I please have a motion accepting his resignation, please?
I so move.
Motion made by trustee Saverman. Second, please?
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Hagan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then also, I have a resolution authorizing the American Needs Fatima Rosemary Rally to be held October 15, 2022 at Avon Park. They've done this event before, and just, I'd like a motion authorizing the American Needs Fatima Recovery Rally, please, on October 15.
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan. Second by trustee, trustee Hagan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Then revising resolution number 180 of 2022, by leading from the list of surplus equipment to 2012 Ford Expedition, we decided we have another used Ford in the village, so we're not gonna sell that used vehicle now, we're gonna, we're gonna keep that one. And, so I get a motion, please, revising resolution number 180, 2022.
Motion, trustee Alpert.
Motion made by trustee Alpert. Can I get a second, please?
Second, trustee Corrigan.
Second by trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I guess I go now. I already talked about parking lot B, so we'll go with that, and I mentioned the train parking lot also, we're meeting on that, a different paving, and I mentioned Woodland, so we're good on that. The fundraiser this, this Sunday, you know, it came about because recreation loves when I call for fundraisers, so I, I decided to call another one. So, and I did it because during, and I mentioned in my thing, during 9/11, how this country and this world came to New York's help and our whole, our, our help here, and I think anytime we can help other people in need, it's, it's, you know, it's your choice to, but I think we should try as best we can, and doing as a community event. So that's from 12 to 4. The proceeds will go equally, like I said, between two, two, two groups that have helped us immensely in this village, so I hope that we can get a good turnout from it. The, I already won the hula hoop contest for the country, but the chief of police, I heard he'll be trying the hula hoop if he makes it that day, or he said he'll order his lieuteness to try it, so we'll see what happens that day.
Have fun with that.
But, and also, we have accepted, Xtel had put in, that's, that's for 106 apartments next to the community center, it's an Avon piece of property, and they put in for 160, 106 apartments there. And meetings I had with them, and how the board sees it too, we required them to have two parking spaces, because parking is, is, is in demand in this village, and they, at first, they weren't as happy as they should have been, and now they're very happy, they're gonna give us two parking spots, and we're gonna, you know, we're gonna look into, we're gonna work with them, the plan. We got them to give us a $10,000 amount of money, so we have our village planner looking at it, and then the village plan will make recommendations to us, and we should know more on that next meeting, all right? But I think it's important to have apartments, I think it's important to have, especially with enough parking, where people can walk, keep their car parked there, and walk downtown. I think the more you have people walking downtown, I think the better it lifts up for the businesses, and the better it is for the community. That's it, except for, thanks Kathy for, you know, working Suffolk, you know, Suffolk Day again, working hard for the village, and the DPW, and everyone else that, that cares about the community. And next year, we're gonna have pony rides at the, at the fair, okay? We do, we got a few more things coming up, because they just, you know, it's, it's strange to me, but...
Everybody likes a pony.
Right. Recreation just loves when I do barbecue, too. They just think it's the greatest thing in the world, so I'm gonna try to make recreation happy, all right? Thank you, folks, all right? Can I have a, and Joe, thank you very much for all your guys, for, for the CSEA, for the DPW, you know, you know, and, you know, Charles's guidance there for making it a good day for all our residents and a safe day, huh? Can I have a?
I move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, made by trustee Saverman. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second made by trustee Hagan. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, folks. Thank you, folks.